All right, thank you, and we'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order virtually again. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll declare the agenda approved and we'll go down. Are there any announcements from members of council, actually? Anything happening? Not much happening right now until we hear of some associations or groups that are able to start, so. Okay, we'll go right down to introduction of new staff, and I'll apologize again for turning to the side. I have another laptop open with the agenda. So let's introduce Andy Janes, who's our IT Systems Integration Specialist for Energize Bridgewater. Welcome. So I'll turn this over to our director to give a more detailed introduction.
Right, thank you, yes, we're very excited to introduce Andy Janes, who joined the Community Development Department as the IT Systems Integration Specialist for Energize Bridgewater. So Andy's a former resident of the Bridgewater area, and he's recently moved back to town after residing in Ottawa, Moncton, and Halifax. He's been working in software development for 20 years for companies including CGI, Xerox, Atlantic Lottery, and the Workers Compensation Board for Nova Scotia. And also during this time, he's renovated lots of houses with focus on energy improvements and utilizing some of the energy rebate programs out there. So he's experienced with some of what's available to residents and homeowners. Then he's also acquired lots of information and experience in energy reduction approaches for home efficiency. So in this new role with the Energize Bridgewater team, he'll be overseeing technical aspects of our Energy Poverty Reduction Program, such as managing the design, prototyping, and evaluation of the information systems and communication platforms that will support our Energy Poverty Reduction Program that we're developing. So he's really excited to be back in Bridgewater, and we're really excited to have him on our team. So wanted to take this, normally we do this in person, but this virtual opportunity to introduce Andy to the team. He started with us in the midst of the pandemic. So his first day with us was actually back in March, and we have had no in-person interaction at this point. So looking forward to the point when we do get to return to an in-office time and get to meet Andy, you know, sort of six feet apart, but in person. So welcome, Andy.
Welcome. Yes, welcome, Andy. So you have 45 minutes to tell us about yourself. Just kidding. Just welcome, you can say a few words if you feel like it.
Well, it's good to be back in Bridgewater, and this is such a really cool project. I'm really excited to be part of it.
Well, we're happy you're on the team and welcome again. The next is to introduce Kim Hopkins, who is our Director of Finance. So while this is really happy occasion, I'm sad to say this is Dawn's last meeting with us. So I'll turn it over to Dawn to introduce Kim, and then we can talk about Dawn for a minute.
Actually, Tammy, did you want to? I hadn't prepared to. Okay, sure. So Kim Hopkins is our new Director of Finance. Kim's been with the town now since last Monday, which was her first day. So she survived the first week and came back, which is great. And Kim is actually a resident in the Bridgewater area, and she brings with her over 20 years of experience, accounting and management experience with a local firm that has national origins. And we're very excited to have Kim join our team. And I think she'll probably be familiar to most of the councillors here having worked on our audits with Grant Thornton. Kim, if you have anything you want to say?
No, just good evening, everybody, and I'm really excited to be here and start this new career path for myself.
Well, we're super excited for you to join our team, Kim. Obviously, we've interacted a lot over the years as you've been part of the audit team for the town. So we know you're going to be awesome in this role, and we're excited to have you.
Thank you very much.
I do want to again say sadly, this is Dawn's last official meeting, I guess you could say, with us. We're going to have a more official goodbye when the pandemic passes. But Dawn, I just really want to thank you, and I'll let council speak as well. I want to thank you for your time with the town of Bridgewater. You've helped streamline not just the budget process, but how we read the budget and have made it a lot easier to follow. You've made some great changes in how we do our finances at the town that will serve our community well for decades. So I mean, we're going to miss you, but you're not going to be far. And I really can't thank you enough for your time here. Any other members of council wish to add to that?
Your worship, I was down today and had the pleasure of saying goodbye to Dawn personally and saying hello to Kim. So I kind of got the jump on it, but Dawn will be missed. I used her as fire chief, deputy chief, and a great person, a great friend, and a great ally. Thanks, Dawn.
Thanks.
This is probably Dawn's happiest day with Bridgewater Town Council. It's been an absolute pleasure, and we wish you all the best as you take on a new career in retirement.
Yeah, yeah, grandbabies. Well, thank you very much for the kind words. And it's really been my pleasure over the last 12 years. Incredible staff at the town of Bridgewater and a great council to work with, so it's been awesome. Thanks.
The best retirement ever.
Thank you.
Don't miss us too much. A little bit, but not too much.
Yes, I definitely will miss the people.
Okay, we'll move on. As we know, we have no in-person delegations until the pandemic is over. We'll move down to the minutes. We have the May 11 regular council meeting minutes. Any errors or omissions there? Hearing none, we'll deem the minutes to be approved. It will go all the way down to reports and recommendations, and I'll turn that over to our CIO to go through the property tax financing program policy.
Okay, so you have two documents attached with your agenda. You have a report, it's rather brief, that kind of details how this financing program came about. It was led by the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, the Province of Nova Scotia, and the Association of Municipal Administrators. And essentially what it is, is it's a program that can provide financial relief at the option of the municipal government. Each individual town and municipality will decide whether or not they wish to participate, but it will provide financial relief to residential and commercial property taxpayers within their jurisdiction. And in doing so, it enables a municipality to address the cash flow issue that arises when you do that. The authority is within the Municipal Government Act to do this. And on May 4, we gave a presentation at a discussion session on the proposed program and policy. And direction given to prepare a policy and bring it back to council for consideration. So notice was given at the May 11 meeting that at this meeting, council would give consideration of such a program. The PowerPoint presentation provides you with a high-level overview of the policy, which is attached to your agenda as well. The key with this policy, it's a tax financing program. It's not a tax forgiveness program, so that's important to note. It's optional, it's not mandatory. Some municipalities can decide if they want to participate or not. Those who can pay their taxes are encouraged to pay their taxes. This program is meant to target those who have had experienced significant financial impacts from COVID-19. The taxes included within this program are property tax, special purpose tax, or the multipurpose tax, and zero charges. It's developed based on a model policy that we were provided with, and it was customized to fit the town of Bridgewater's program that we would offer. Taxpayers can basically start by having a six-month installment program, which would set an amount per month, and then we go into the financing piece of it. And the financing piece would be 24 months, and there would be an early repayment charge. Because we locked in a loan with Municipal Finance Corp., and there's two payment dates, I believe, a year that we can make. So there would be interest that we would incur if someone wanted to get out early up to that payment date within a year. And therefore, that would have to be covered by the payer if they wished to get out early. The proposed interest charge is 1.4%, and that's to cover the cost of borrowing and an administration fee. So this will take additional resources to provide this program. And council, at the discussion session, was directed that we look at recovering that. Essentially, the policy sets out the criteria, and it's targeting residential individuals through proof that they've had financial hardship, and commercial as well, commercial property payers through documentation that they've experienced or incurred hardship. And the key is to participate in the program. You have to be in good standing, your account has to be in good standing, so you can't have taxes in arrears. The residential test of hardship is that you have to provide proof of receipt of a Canada Emergency Response Benefit, or the SERF. If you don't have that, a record of employment demonstrating loss of income due to the layoff issued March 16 or later, or receipt of the Nova Scotia Worker Emergency Bridge Fund. And that criteria there is that you're laid off due to COVID-19. The eligible properties would be those that are owned by residents of Nova Scotia. It's registered property owners who are ordinarily resident and have lost their jobs due to service reductions from the state of emergency. And that's indicated there'd be proof required of that. This has to be the owner's primary residence. So landlords would not qualify. It has to be your primary residence. And it could be a property owned and registered as a tourism operator at Torres in Nova Scotia for the 2019 closed season. It excludes vacant land, so it wouldn't be land that's proposed for development or land that we may have, yet actually have to have a house and be living on that property. And properties owned by non-residents in Nova Scotia would be excluded. And important to note, council can vary these requirements. These are what are being recommended. Commercial, the proof of demonstrated hardship is receipt of the Canada Emergency Wage Subsidy. And the test there, it's a federal program. The test is that there's a 30% drop in revenue month of April, March, April, May of 2020 versus the corresponding month from 2019, or another month within 2020 if you weren't in existence in 2019. We had originally talked about also having the business account loan as another measure. Since then, it's been determined that there's no proof required, no criteria test really to qualify for that loan. So besides payroll, your amount of payroll up to 1.5 million. So it didn't provide necessarily the test we may have been looking for. So we removed that and replaced it with proof, if you don't have the Canada Emergency Wage Subsidy benefit, then proof and reduction in revenue by 30% for the period of March 15 to May 15 compared to the same period in 2019, or for a previous two-month period in 2020. So if you don't qualify for the wage subsidy, your payroll may be too high, or you may be self-employed, and you wouldn't qualify for that. If you can demonstrate that you've lost 30% in revenue for that period of March 15 to May 15, then you can qualify for the program. The property would include a taxable commercial property used as a commercial shopping, office, industrial firm, and has a total taxable 2020 property assessment equal to or under $3 million. And having said that, there are some properties, regardless of value, qualify automatically because we know that there was a definite impact. So that'd be tourist accommodations, automotive and recreation leisure dealerships, private nonprofit recreation facilities they were required to shut down, hospitality industries such as restaurants, bars, cafes, coffee shops, service industries such as hairdressers, nail salons, gyms, tattoo studios, and healthcare providers required to reduce hours such as dentists, naturopaths, doctors, chiropractors, physiotherapists. The suggested commercial criteria, in addition to demonstrating hardship and having the assessment value or meeting being one of those industries we just reviewed, the property owner, what would be excluded is the property owners would have not experienced financial hardship through loss of revenue. So that one's obvious, if you haven't had any hardship, then you don't qualify. Property owners who receive compensation through business interruption insurance, so they've made a claim for loss of revenue. Provincially subsidized daycare centers, properties used for landfill, pipeline, managed forest, parking, and commercial vacant land, wouldn't qualify. Properties with an active tax agreement with the municipality of the town through legislation or dialogue. Municipally funded nonprofit organizations with property taxes already partially exempted by the municipality. So in essence, you're already providing financial support. And all properties managed under the payment and move programs. So it's a payment and move taxes. The administration, this suggested installment program we have is that this would be eligible for taxes due between April 1 and September 30. So that would pick up the interim as well as the final billing. Up to September 30, it'd be $25 a month that would be due. And then after September 30, it would be locked in, and you would pay 1/24 of the taxes owing per month plus interest for 24 months. It'd be 1.4% interest rate. The MFC, who we borrow through, would be 1.1, and we would add a 0.3 for the min fee on top of that. So we would have to do some estimation with the Municipal Finance Corp. as to what we feel we need to borrow. The province, I can't remember the exact number now, but it was 380 million or thereabouts. That the Municipal Finance Corp. was allotting for this. And technically, you have up until April of 2021, or March of 2022, sorry, 2021, sorry, to apply for the funding. But it's on a first-come basis. So I suspect most municipalities will be applying as soon as they can for the funding, or for the loan. And to do so, we'll have to give an estimate in terms of what we think we need, knowing that it would pick up those who wish to participate in the program from April 1 through September 30. The terms, if you qualify and the terms are acceptable, we'd be asking a property owner to enter into a tax financing agreement similar to what we do under the PACE program. And this would set out those terms, the interest rate, that if you want to get out early, there's a interest repayment charge, how much is covered under the financing agreement. That you must be in good standing at all times. If you default, you're removed from the program, and the balance of outstanding taxes is due and payable at 12%. Because that's our normal interest rate on taxes owing. And as I mentioned, there's an early repayment option, and it's equal to the interest rate applied to the term remaining until the next payment is due from us to the Municipal Finance Corp. In terms of the process, you see that's blocked out there, but we would mail out with the tax bills that are going out at the end of this week, information about the program, essentially advising that the program will be made available. The application will be through the Association of Municipal Administrators website. So they've developed an online portal that will allow for online application to be made. And the reason why we'd use them is because we don't have to invest in that development on our website here. It's already being done there, and they're doing it for municipalities across Nova Scotia to take advantage of. And there could be a mail option as well. We're really trying to discourage in-person applications. We have to work out a few details there with legal about the tax financing agreement and what's required there. But we're trying to work it out so that we can handle the applications without in-person meetings. The advantages of the program, as noted during our discussion session, are that it provides property tax relief in a targeted manner. So for those who've experienced the financial hardship. We're able to manage our cash flow. Because if we don't have the tax revenue coming in, we don't have the cash to pay our obligations. So it helps manage that. And we're able to recover our interest costs through this program as well. The disadvantages are that the more taxes we defer in terms of payment through the program, the less we're earning income on. Because normally, we'd have money in an account that earns interest. And also, there's interest earned on overdue taxes, as I mentioned, at 12%. Whereas under this program, it's 1.4. So we estimated for the two years of this program, it's around $89,000 that we would normally realize that we won't be. And there is a resource impact to administer the program, and that's what the 0.3 was for. But we'd be doing it with existing staff resources, so that would take their attention away from other work programs that they may have in order to administer the program. So the policy is here for council's consideration. Notice has been given, so if council's comfortable with the program, then a motion to approve the policy would be made.
Thank you, Tammy. Any questions for members of council?
Yes, Mayor Mitchell, Bill McGinnis. Tammy, that $89,000 cost to the town that you just mentioned, that's a guest estimate, I'm assuming?
Yeah, that's based on our previous fiscal years, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we had that analyzed by Kevin Kettie. Kind of what we normally realize, yeah.
Other questions? Comments? Hearing any, so we're prepared to make a motion?
Yes, your worship, I move the town council of town Bridgewater approves the COVID-19 property tax financing program policy. It's presented in document 20-09A, 090A, sorry. It's policy 101 for the town, effective immediately.
Thank you, seconded by. I think we'll give that to Council Thurburn for the win. Further discussion?
Tammy, do we know, or do we have a percentage of how many properties this is going to affect? Or how much of our revenue, I guess, is going to affect? If we got 20 million in revenue, what percent of our revenue would this actually affect? 1 million, 2 million?
We did do an analysis of this at the very beginning because NSFM wanted to know how much they should be going to Municipal Finance Corp. for. So based on some provincial assumptions in terms of the number of restaurants that would apply for this, or, you know, beauty salons, that type of thing, right down to residential, we estimated about 4.9 million that we would be looking at having to borrow.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, we'll go around the room. Council McGinnis, here and a.
We're going to show our hands, or what?
Well, we can try the hand. Let's go around the room this time, and then next time, we'll try to show our hands, okay? Council Frazier?
Yay.
Council Thurburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
And Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And myself, I'm in favor. I was also doing that to, it gets the speakers, it gets you to pop up on the feed. The last people who spoke, who have cameras on, now become part of the live stream. So I'm trying to reorder people so that we have council at the front and and staff are kind of in the background, just on teams, not in importance. Okay. Our next item is the capital budget monthly review. So as you'll recall, this was something, as we passed the budget, we wanted projects to come back to us so that we could kind of get a second look at them just in case, as the pandemic progressed, we felt that we didn't have the, either the staff resources or the financial resources to go ahead with these. So you'll see that the June list is what we're looking at now. And so I just want everyone to take a look at that and see if there's anything that is of concern to members of council.
Nothing of concern, it's Andrew here. Just wanted to know if we had applied for that provincial funding for downtown beautification. I can't remember the exact name of the grant for the town, sorry.
Yes. Tammy, I believe you're on mute. Yes, we have.
Very, thank you. Any other questions with that? No, okay. And I don't believe we need a motion because that was approved in the budget, and we're not making any changes. Next item is the fourth quarter reports. Those are before you. And I know we've said this the last couple that we got. I love this, I love getting these updates, especially love seeing completed on a whole bunch of them on the side. I don't know if the CIO wanted to run through some of these, or if council had specific questions that they wanted to ask. Any highlights, Tammy, that you wanted to touch on?
None in particular. It's kind of organized each one by your strategic initiatives so that you can kind of see where these are. These were fourth quarters, so it would have been the end of March, the end of the 2019-20 fiscal year. Our first quarter will be coming out the end of June, so it's going to be June for this year. But I would say that we had some, as you say, some completed, like the economic development piece. If you look at kind of the admin one, that's complete, so council went through that. We incorporated money in the budget to look at an economic development officer, and a decision's going to have to be made shortly whether we proceed with that position this year. And the business park's ongoing, you'll see that reflected in almost every one of the departments. The Business Park infrastructure is a big draw on resources. And right now, I'd say that the majority of the work is in engineering and public works as we get ready to go to tender on the intersection improvements. And there's some land acquisition that we're working on there. Um, yeah. And if we go down to, uh, finance, a lot of things in finance were delayed a bit, uh, in March, uh, because of COVID-19. And you'll see in the next quarter report that because of COVID-19, uh, we kind of had to reshift our focus a lot and look at these types of policies and putting in the program and monitoring our cash flow and that type of thing, which has affected our ability to really get at some of these more strategic initiatives in finance. And then in, in, uh, community development, uh, as with admin, the Bridgewater Memorial Arena, uh, council ha, went through that process and, uh, made a decision, um, to not go any further with it until, um, perhaps another year and revisit it then. Uh, but we had looked at, um, um, and we did a feasibility study and looked at a possible reuse of that. And, uh, there is, we made the decision to look at it for transit at this point, but that was about it. Um, the Energize Bridgewater Group has been very active, looking at, um, a number of the milestones within, within that program there. And, uh, the, the energy financing study, there's a resource study that's underway. We had a partnership with Open North to look at some procurement training there. Um, particularly, particularly that one kind of focused on how do we deal with all these tech companies coming at us with, with proposals and the latest and greatest? And how do we make sure we don't go down a, a path that could not be good for us? Uh, so they identified that that's a risk to a number of smart cities. And in engineering, uh, as I mentioned, uh, business parks, a big piece of it. The Storm Standing Theory Master Plan, we started that. So council asked us to do a proposal call there and Larry's team put together the RFP that's been awarded. And we, we're looking at having some type of check-in with council in, in early fall on that. Sierra rate as well, working with finance, we're looking at bringing a, a plan for transition of the rate to council. Um, it was targeted for June, but I suspect that's going to be pushed out a bit because of COVID-19 and how we have removed to a user, uh, fee there. And they were also involved in that, in the Bridgewater Memorial Arena and working on that project. Town master plan, we, we, uh, undertaken the RFP process anyway to, to, uh, look at a town master plan for some of our undeveloped areas and how infrastructure should be, should be planned there and how that should relate to land use. And, uh, so council approved the, uh, the scope of work for that and agreed, agreed that we want to move ahead with that. Um, there's some pump station replacement, um, work that's being done, the digester upgrades, uh, there's roof installed in 2019 and some further work that we were doing there. And asset management, um, that's a project that's going to span both engineering and admin and staff are, um, looking at, um, some training. Actually Matt took some training last week on that through an asset online program. And we're looking at developing a program this year, applying for some federal funding through F, or through FCM, some funding to develop an asset management plan as well. The rest of it is just updates on kind of what we're doing from day to day. And that gives you an indication of how the, the last quarter went.
Great, thank you. Um, any questions? And I should remind you can use the raise hand button. Uh, so Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Love it. Uh, Tammy, I assume obviously the, the cormorant removal has been delayed because of COVID-19, but do we have any new timelines being presented by the minister?
I haven't received any, any here directly. Um, I haven't really asked for any new timelines on that. It's more discuss, uh, discussions with the property owner. But, um, yeah, I, I, I had heard that it would be like early summer, but I haven't, I haven't received that officially.
Okay. Council Thorburn?
Yeah, yes, Tammy, I'm, I'm still looking at the town of Bridgewater app. I've been reading up quite a bit on that and, and a lot of towns and cities that's using it are way open front and it does so much for us and it's such a high priority. I'd like to see something done on that because that would be the one avenue where all of our residents and business can go to, to get information on the town and give us information so we can help them. So I'd like to see that go as fast as it can.
And we, we approved funds, council approved funds in this year's budget to actually have that, uh, completed. So Patrick's working on that and how we can push people to various spots within our webpage for information.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Other questions from anyone? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to, uh, appointments to Energize Bridgewater Advisory Committee. Um, there's some citizen and stakeholder appointments and then, um, council appointment. So I hope, I hope council doesn't mind, we could have, we can change that one if you want. I, um, I put myself on that committee just thinking about the connection between, um, the fact that I, I go to a number of events throughout the year to speak about Energize Bridgewater. So I thought it was a natural connection for the council, um, member on the committee to, uh, likely be the mayor. Um, but I'm open to changing that if someone feels strongly that they'd like to be on that committee.
I think it makes sense.
Perfect. If someone would like to make the, uh, the motion for the, the first motion for the citizen appointees, that would be fantastic.
I can make a motion, your worship.
Thank you.
Um, I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Ernest O'Neill as a resident member and Nova Scotia Power, our N, sorry, RDNT Property Management Incorporated, Nova Scotia Health Authority and Second Story Women's Center as stakeholder organization members of the Energize Bridgewater Advisory Committee, each for a term of three years ending May 25th, 2023, per the committee's terms of reference.
Thank you, seconded by.
I'll second that, Andrew.
Mayor Tanner, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Questions being called? Let's, uh, can we all try their hands, all in favor? See if that works. Uh.
There you go.
Okay, um.
Excuse me, Mayor Mitchell?
Yep.
Um, for the purpose of our live stream, it may be best to, uh, have a verbal vote?
Okay. I wasn't sure if they would show up or if they even show up really teeny tiny. So I don't mind doing the verbal vote. Okay. Council McGinnis, here and a. You gotta unmute, sorry?
Yay.
All right, Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
Um, I am in favor. Uh, and would someone care to make the next motion?
I will, your worship.
Thank you. Council Thorburn?
I would move that town council of town of Bridgewater appoint David Mayor Mitchell as council representative to the Energize Bridgewater Advisory Committee as per the current committee's terms of reference.
Thank you, seconded by.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Council Frasier. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called? Uh, Council McGinnis, here and a.
Yay.
Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Uh, Council McDonald?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And myself, I am in favor. Thank you. Uh, our next item is, uh, another, uh, motion notice, which is the proposed policy of public disclosure of grants to organizations. Um, probably we should, uh, just run this really high level. I don't know, Tammy, if you could just really quick for the public so they know this will come back to the next meeting.
Sure. There are amendments done to the Municipal Government Act about a year ago that stated that council would require to adopt a policy that specifies how they will report on the issuance of grants to organizations. Previously, the MGA just said that you had to advertise in a local paper. So, uh, this policy, we did, don't, didn't have a policy, but this policy does that. And it essentially just states that council will advertise the grants on an annual basis, uh, no later than 60 days after the end of the fiscal year, but the grants they awarded the previous, uh, fiscal year. And it will have the organization's name and the amount and will advertise using the website and our, the social media sites and our newsletter. So previously we used, used the local paper, um, but this provides, um, means for it to get to the doorstep as well as online.
Perfect. Any questions? Pretty straightforward, this will come back to the next meeting. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I can make a motion, your worship.
Thank you.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the June 8th, 2020 meeting of town council, um, council approved the proposed public disclosure of grants to organization policy as presented in document 20 dash 094.
Thank you, seconded by.
Seconded.
Council McGinnis, thank you. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called? Uh, go around again, Council McGinnis?
Yay.
Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
Thank you, and I'm in favor. Perfect. Uh, next item is the grants to organization. It's the May 1st intake. Um, so you have, uh, three in there, uh, recommended by the committee. So $5,000 for Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center for the 2020 Canadian Tire Para Hockey Cup Championships, which we now know will be the 2021, um, event. That event has been bumped a year. There's a thousand dollars for the VLN Canada, Nova Scotia Branch, Lunenburg Site, and $3,000 to the YMCA of Southwest Nova Scotia. Does the committee want to add any, anything to that? It's pretty straightforward. The, the one that I have a question on is, um, I mean, the LCLC, the one for, um, the Para, the Para Cup, I mean, if we approve it now, it'll just sit for next year's event. So I guess council has to determine, is it best now to just, to give it to the LCLC and then that's done? Or is it to wait, uh, wait on it till next year?
That's a good point, I think, maybe where the, there's limited funds or there's a set amount, maybe we can reconsider that. I, was that announcement just recently made or for the different?
Uh, we, we just found out about it, I think, at the last LCLC. I don't think it's been officially announced, has it Deputy Mayor?
Uh, I don't think, not that I know of, but I, I know we've been told, yeah, the LCLC.
We, we had a meeting of that committee Friday and Patrick was there and we haven't been told, although we suggested that it would be postponed because it's almost impossible to do. And they said the decision would be made in June, so you guys know more than I do.
Yeah, and with international competitors, um, I think that's really, uh, really the issue of it as well, right? We don't know what, uh, what the state of the world will be. So to catch your Frasier's point, if we, if we pull that one out, then that's $5,000. We do have to reallocate across, um, our community for other needs.
Could we, could we not make them have to apply again though? Just keep it a live application and, and get them to maybe change the dates or re-change the dates?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I think your, your policy kind of sets out that there's application deadlines. So I guess you'd have to just make sure that the grant committee knew that this was considered to be submitted by whatever, considered to be submitted on whatever deadline is set for this year.
I think if the event is being deferred, then the funds should be deferred. It just goes hand in hand.
I, I agree.
So to, to the deputy mayor's point that we won't make them reapply, we would just recognize that they have an application in. And I guess this time next year, is there a mechanism to put that back on the agenda? Sandra?
Um, yes, and there is also staff representation on the Grants to Organizations Committee. So we could definitely ensure that that, uh, stays in the hopper, as it were, for the Grants to Organizations Committee.
Perfect. Does anyone object to, to pulling that out and, uh, just having that $5,000 stay in the Grants Committee to, to look at future applications?
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Does, uh, is someone prepared to make a motion, uh, for the remaining two?
I will, your worship.
Thank you.
I would move that town council of town of Bridgewater endorse recommendation of Grants to Organization Committee and award grants for the May the 1st, 2020 intake period as follows. $1,000 VLN Canada, Nova Scotia Branch, Lunenburg Site, and $3,000 YMCA of the Southwest Nova Scotia.
Thank you, seconded by.
I'll second that.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Tanner, uh, any further discussion?
Just, uh, oh, sorry. Somewhat related but, uh, unrelated is, have we heard any update on the Nova Scotia wide marketing levy? Hey, I bring it up because of the, you know, the economic benefit of having the Para team visit and so on and, and. But I think we also, that we didn't hear anything by a certain date, we would start rolling on our own interpretation.
Yeah. I think we were, we were looking for special legislation that would enable us to develop that bylaw. Yeah. And we postponed proceeding with that and, cause there was a proposal for a Nova Scotia wide one, but have heard nothing.
Yes, I think what was left is, just as the CIO said, the, the minister had kind of taken our lead and said, no, no, we'll do it. You don't have to worry about it. And then we haven't heard, um, anything since. So it might be worth, um, following up with, uh, with Minister Porter, I believe, to find out, um, uh, as Minister for Municipal Affairs, where that sits and, um, how quickly they can get that ready for the, uh, fall sitting.
You could even make it an agenda item on the NSFM call maybe this week.
That is a good idea. I will send that, the email as soon as we're done. Okay. Um, so we've had a mover and a seconder. Uh, are you ready for the question? Uh, question being called, Council McGinnis, here and a.
Yay.
Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yeah.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I am in favor, thank you. Motion is carried. And we'll go down to group benefits, premium holiday. And I think, uh, I'll turn that over to the CIO just to give a quick explanation for the public as they wonder what that might mean.
Yeah. So we have a, um, I guess we, we call it a surplus, but we have about 140, 114,000 of our current annualized health and dental premiums are in a reserve. That's about 62%. Memorial Chappelle recommends that we maintain 25%. So that's kind of what you should target. So we're well above the target. And, uh, therefore they, they looked at, um, some options for us with respects to that reserve. And what was being recommended is that in recognition that that's partially funded by employees and we have more than necessary in that reserve, that we should look at a premium holiday. And that would essentially mean that for a period of time, there'd be no contributions required by either the employer or the employee to the, the health and dental, uh, plan. And what's being recommended is that we look at a two-month holiday and that would essentially leave 84,000 or 46% of the annualized health and dental premiums in the plan. So still above the 25%, so a good spot to be in. Um, the report kind of gives you the breakdown of what two months means to employee, employees and employer. The employer pays a bit more of this plan as the employees fund 100% of long-term disability plan. So it kind of, you kind of bring the two together to look at the split. So it would equate to a, a total refund of 14,000 in, in April and a 15,000 refund in May. So we, we would look at that, um, refund. And when we looked at the COVID-19 budget adjustments, we also incorporated that, that refund into those budget adjustments as well. Uh, what's, so what's being recommended is, is that we approve that premium holiday and that would basically be equal to two months worth of premiums for both the employer and the employer.
Great, thank you. Uh, seems to make perfect sense for, in terms of the timing, especially with, um, with COVID and, um, you know, those struggling gives them a bit of a break and a little bit more money to put back into the local economy. Any questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Don't everybody jump at once.
I will, if you like.
Thank you.
The town council of town of Bridgewater provide a premium holiday for the health and dental group benefits for the month of April and May 2020, and that this be funded from town's current annualized health and dental premiums.
Thank you, seconded by.
Seconded.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, Council Thorburn, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Council McGinnis, here and a. Uh, unmute and then do it again.
He's fallen asleep.
Yay.
Thank you. Counselor Fager.
Yay.
Counselor Thorburn.
Yay.
Counselor McDonald.
Yay.
Counselor Graves.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
I'm in favor. I feel like I need to be a little more entertaining for everybody, keep everyone on their toes. We're getting towards the end, though. The next item is, you have a request before you from the farmer's market, the Bridgewater Farmers Market, to lease some space in the former Bridgewater Memorial Arena. And so I know the CAO will give a little bit of background on what this specific request is.
So the Bridgewater Farmers Market is an example of a, I guess, a business operation that's been impacted by COVID-19. And to kind of adjust to the, the requirements to allow them to provide the market safely to residents and enable vendors to sell their goods, they're requesting that they be able to use a portion of the former Bridgewater Memorial Arena. So they're looking at the seniors, the area that used to be occupied by the seniors group, a portion of that area. And the proposal is, is that they would do online ordering and essentially use that space for the vendors to package and then have pickup of the product on Saturdays. They did indicate that if restrictions relax to the point that they're able to have the market in, in the more traditional way, occupying outdoor space, that they would like to, to do it on the space at the Bridgewater Memorial Arena in the, in the, the open area and still utilize a portion of that seniors area for, for their, I guess, their farmer's market purposes as well. The cost to us to accommodate them, right now there's nothing in that space, but there is a cost to basically outfit the space to make it usable. So there's some roof repairs that need to be done, some plumbing that needs to be reconnected. And we estimate that's around $2,000. The Bridgewater Farmers Market Association did indicate that they'd be willing to provide $500 towards that. And in addition to that, they would pay $150, $150, sorry, for, for electrical. The, they would need a facility usage agreement if we were to entertain this. And we do have, or I do have in the report, some recommended conditions that would be contained within an agreement if you wish to proceed with this. And that would be to kind of reconfirm their contribution of $500 and $150. That they would be required to obtain all permits and approvals required to occupy the space. So if there's a change of use or any other approvals required, that they have those. I did talk to our development officer and indicated that the use would be permitted. They would need to have insurance satisfactory to us, indemnify and hold harmless to town for anything, any claims that may come because of their action. Not occupying any of the outside area for market use without the consent of the town, simply because it might interfere with our use. They would take the, the space as is, so besides fixing the roof and connecting the plumbing, there's no other expectation from the town. They'd be responsible for cleaning and garbage removal and ensuring compliance for COVID-19. If there are any maintenance issues that arose during the term of the lease, the town may at its sole discretion rectify the same. If we choose not to, then they could do it. And if they choose not to, then we could inlay. The space shall be left in a respectful condition when we leave. And if there's any damage, then we could obviously have that rectified and put the expenses back to the tenant. And any use of the facility outside of Saturdays shall be approved by the town to ensure, ensure that it doesn't interfere with any of our operations as we still use that facility to store goods and parks and recuse it in the summer. And the use shall be limited to the space as noted in, in the attachment to the report. So as I mentioned, if you wish to do this, that would be recommended by staff be put in place to, to clearly set out the terms that we would expect with respects to their occupancy of that. And it would just be for this season.
Thank you. Questions from members of council?
Yeah, I have two.
I have a couple, David.
Counselor Graves and then Counselor Thorburn.
So the first one is, they're, they want to bring a 10 by 10 foot shed?
Yeah.
Is there space, will that go in the back around where the seniors center is?
Yeah.
And there's enough space back there for vehicles and fire and everything else?
Yep, they can move that. And it's mainly because they want to store tents and, and that. So if it's raining and people have to stand outside and wait for their product, they're not getting wet.
Okay. So the second question is in regards to the parking lot where they want to have an outdoor farmer's market if it gets busy. Is that, is the concrete in good enough shape for them to do that safely?
The asphalt?
Yeah. Just thinking of a safety point of view.
Yeah, so we'd have to have that assessed. One of the things we, we stated is that it would have to be with our approval. So if there's a safer spot on the lot, we'd have to look at that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Good questions. Counselor Thorburn.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, Michael, but it appears to the pavement. But Tammy, that $2,000, we're, we're putting up 1,500. Is that $2,000 including the power or is the power excluded from that $2,000 cost to the town?
That's excluded. That was just to outfit the facility to get it, to get it in the, the shape that they could go in.
And where would that money be coming from? It's not in the budget, it's not been approved.
That's right. It would be unbudgeted, so we'd have to look at our maintenance budget and perhaps go over in that area.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Anyone?
I have one, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
What would it cost us to host them in their regular location? I, I know that there's a cost to the town and I, you know, I'm fine with that happening year after year, but spending additional money to prepare a facility for businesses that, that make revenue off of it, you know, I'm kind of thinking if a, a car dealership came to us and asked to use vacant land, it was going to cost us $2,000 to make that available to them. You know, there's, you're giving to one business and not another. So what would it typically cost for us to provide the space for the farmer's market?
There is no cost. They pay for the power, there's a, a pole there and they, they lease that space. So it's, just provide it to them. Here they're asking for the covered area and the plumbing and, and to enable cleaning and sanitizing and that type of activity that they feel they're required to do under the restrictions that are in place right now.
Do you have a follow-up, Jennifer?
No, thank you.
Mayor Mitchell, Bill McGuinness. If that parking lot needs some upgrading, that's going to add to the expense. I'm just wondering if we consider asking our friends in the municipality to help us out with this.
So we do, one of the clauses that's being recommended is that any maintenance, we're not, we're not held to do. So if it's determined that they feel the parking lot needs to be patched or whatever it may be, we can choose not to do it. And then they can choose to do it or the, the lease could be broke. So we wouldn't be held to, to doing it. But we could still ask the District of Lunenburg, if, if you wish, to help with any of the upfitting costs or if we deem that there needs to be repairs to the parking area, that they assist with that as well.
I would, I would certainly probably strongly recommend to the farmer's market that they, predominantly being vendors and, and residents of the municipality district of Lunenburg, should themselves seek the support from that council. You know, it's a, it's a market that serves residents inside and outside of town. And, and so if there was a financial contribution, I would think that they would be the best, best suited to ask for that because they would be literally speaking to their own council. The other question I had was, after we've done the work to the, to the, that space, does that facility become any use to us? So farmer's market closes at the end of October, can we use that for anything now that we've done this work?
I think it would depend on the occupancy in terms of what might, might be required for the space, but this is to take care of leaking and, and hook up plumbing. So I'm assuming that if we wanted to look at reusing that space, that, that wouldn't be wasted money. I don't know, Larry, if you know anything more about the condition of that space?
Not, not really, other than this is only a portion of the seniors complex. It's not to reestablish the entire area. So it'd be the, the main portion around the kitchenette, I believe.
Yeah.
So you couldn't use that for additional storage or any, like if we were putting in, like if the buses are going to be stored in this facility, does this give them a place to have office space or have a washroom that, that the drivers can use?
It certainly opens up the options that we can, you know, we can look at once, once water's back and, and the roof is repaired. It certainly makes it an option that we can look at.
Okay. It just, it makes me a little easier with the, with the work we're going to do if there's future use for it.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yeah.
But I thought we were investing a substantial amount of money in BMA for that purpose, to house the buses and to create a space for the drivers to relax and, and so on.
Yeah, we had $150,000, I believe that got taken out this year because you wanted to wait another year.
I think we left it in.
We left it in.
Yeah.
Okay. I just remember the conversation about can we wait a year and, and park them, but.
We didn't listen.
The 150,000 is to basically outfit it for transit and provide some space in there. Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just one more question. Mayor Mitchell, you, you made a comment about municipality helping to fund this and so on. Can you, I'm not sure what you're asking. Are you asking the Bridgewater Farmers Market to ask the municipality to fund some of the renovation money or?
Well, that, yeah, that's kind of where I was going, especially if there's, if there's additional work that needs to be done. So in my head, I was thinking more beyond the $2,000. I don't, I don't have too many issues with the two, but if, let's say they needed $4,000 worth of pavement repair, knowing that we just said we probably wouldn't do that, I think the logical next step is, that's where I was going. Other questions?
Yes, Mayor. Do we have a breakdown of how many businesses would use that that are in town? How many are, do we, we have numbers?
In terms of where the vendors are?
Yeah, the tenants are for the farmer's market. Do we, do we have any numbers?
I don't think so.
No, no.
That would pretty much dictate what you would ask from municipality, I guess, if, if we'd have to have those numbers first.
If it's 90%, it's on the low and I think it's, it's all but maybe one or two.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, I agree.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
With, with that point in mind, the fact that a lot of these businesses are outside of town, the farmer's market is a real jewel. I really value it being in town. But recognizing that there are so many small businesses in town that are struggling to cover the cost of additional cleaning and, and, you know, all the things that are going into keeping their, their customers safe and reopening, I feel a little bit uncomfortable even putting $2,000 into helping one organization get through this while others are kind of on their own in it. I know $2,000 isn't a lot of money, but it would be to any one of the small businesses in town.
Yep, oh, fair point. Further discussion? Is someone?
Would you like to have a motion, Your Worship?
Yes, if someone's prepared to make one, yep.
I'd move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater direct staff to prepare and execute a facility usage agreement to enable the Bridgewater Farmers Market Association to use space within the former Bridgewater Memorial Arena for a 2020 season for a purpose of a farmer's market with the terms of the agreement to be generally consistent with the terms outlined in Document 20-099.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Graves. Further discussion?
I just think it's really important to have the farmer's market continue. If the cost is within reason, I don't mind the town handling that, although I would like to see some effort made or some handout or reaching, reaching out to the, to the municipality to help out. Because I suspect that when you're dealing with a roof that's leaking, the cost might escalate there. You've got the parking lot, so I, I think we should put some feverstone to municipal and see if they're willing to help us.
Yep, and we can do that.
That, that is not a condition of the motion.
I'm just going to add, just to Counselor McDonald's point, and I, and I do agree that, that there are lots of businesses that could use the help. I guess for me, and why I'll support the motion is, this is for one year. If this was to move them up here, then I think as a long-term solution, they should be investing more. But the goal is in my, at least for me, is that they are able to continue this year and then return to King Street next year. Because they do bring a lot of activity, shoppers downtown. They're going across the street for breakfast, they're walking up and down the street and going to other merchants. So there is an economic spinoff in favor of the commercial entities downtown. And so having them up halfway up Empire, I think, will still be beneficial for the town. So the, the job of the other merchants will be to pull them back, you know, don't forget if you go to the farmer's market to come on back down and, and enjoy downtown.
Yeah, agreed.
Further? Anyone else before we ask for the question?
Your Worship.
Yes.
Weren't they involved in our master plan to have them eventually relocate up in the building once it gets renovated? I thought they were, they were supposed to be one of the tenants, so this would be a start to see how they can make out.
Yeah, the, the overall project, yes, you are correct. If we went with the farmer's market and performing arts theater, which of course we've, we've decided not to move ahead with this year, but you're right, it would, it would give them a test of that, that location.
Yeah.
But to the CAO's point, this is just for one year. We're not entering into, this is not for next year, at least they haven't, certainly haven't requested that.
No, I agree.
Further discussion?
Question.
Question is being called. Counselor McGuinness, your name.
Yay.
Counselor Fager.
Yay.
Counselor Thorburn.
Yay.
Counselor McDonald.
Yay.
Counselor Graves.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
And I'm in favor, thank you. That is carried and we'll go to our last item, which is the Summer 2020 Council Meeting Schedule. So always subject to change depending on what happens. And this may, this may be the year that we, if anything's going to happen, it's going to be this year where we might need to meet more. But just traditionally for the public's benefit, we do reduce our, our summer meeting schedule just by one meeting in July and one meeting in August, we reduce those. So the proposal is discussion session July 6th with a council meeting on July 13th and then a discussion session on Tuesday, August the 4th, and then a council meeting on August 10th, and then returning on September 8th to a normal schedule. September 8th, I believe, is also the deadline for anyone running for council to have submitted their nomination papers. So again, it's subject to change at the, if there's something that comes up, we will obviously advertise a meeting as we're required to and then call, call one as needed. Are there any questions on that? No, all right. We do have an in-camera meeting after, as for contract negotiations, as per the MGA. So you'll have to leave this meeting, go to the next invite to log into that one. If there's nothing further, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Counselor Thorburn, seconded by?
Seconded.
Second motion?
I'll go with Counselor Fager. We are adjourned. We'll see you on the other side.